The November 21st, 2024, Des Moines City Council Meeting is now called to order. Councilmember Oxegar will now lead us in the pledge. Please stand if you're able.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
I'm going to move this over here. So, thank you for attending tonight, and I appreciate you being out on a nice Thursday evening, even though it's gotten quite chilly, right? So, for those of you who are watching online, I think still Channel 21 is still having struggles. I think Channel 21 is not working right now. We need a part. There's a problem. So, please, of course, if you're trying to watch on 21, you're not seeing this. But if you message around, just to get the message out there, to go to the city website, in fact, if that ever happens, go to the city website. There's an alternative way of watching. There's a little click button right on the front-facing page of the website that will take you to a live stream. So, also, please, oh, okay. Also, please know that we can't attend to our phones from the dais. And so, please, if you try and text us, that's not going to work very well if there's a problem, whether it's online or even if you notice something in here. So, please email if you've got a problem, cityclerk@desmoinewa.gov. And that is cityclerk@desmoinewa.gov. Okay, so let the record show that all council members are present. Is there any correspondence that we have not previously received by council?
No, ma'am.
All right, thank you. So, we have a treat coming up next is a formal swearing-in of our new city manager, Catherine Cafrey.
I, Catherine Cafrey.
I, Catherine Cafrey.
Have duly been appointed.
Have duly been appointed.
To the office of city manager.
To the office of city manager.
Do solemnly affirm.
Do solemnly affirm.
That I will faithfully.
That I will faithfully.
And impartially.
And impartially.
Perform the duties of this office.
Perform the duties of this office.
As prescribed by law.
As prescribed by law.
To the best of my ability.
To the best of my ability.
And that I will support the government.
And that I will support the government.
Of the United States.
Of the United States.
And the laws of the state.
And the laws of the state.
And the ordinances of the city of Des Moines.
And the ordinances of the city of Des Moines. Great, okay. So, now is time for comments from the public. And right now, we have no one signed up. So, what I do like to do is ask, if you came to the council meeting tonight, not realizing that you would need to sign in in order to speak, but you would like to speak, is there anybody in the audience with that in mind? All right, pass this down. Great. So, a little surprise from the planned agenda. Right now, we're going to move the executive session up to this space in the meeting. So, the council will now be dismissing to executive session under RCW 42.30.110.1i for the purpose of reviewing potential litigation. The executive session is expected to last for 20 minutes or until, oh, that clock is not right, until 6:24. And the council business meeting will resume after the close of the session. Do we need to tap for this? Thank you. Do I tap to get their attention?
Yep.
So, can I have your attention, please? We are going to extend the executive session for 15 minutes or until 6:34, is that right? No, 6:20?
Well, that clock's not right.
6:24, so, anyway, 15 minutes. Do you have a motion?
So, moved.
Second? Moved and seconded, all in favor? See you in 15 minutes.
He's free.
This city is for me, a small little section, and just as far as justice. Yes, please allow me. It is. I don't know how you're doing it, but we love that. I'm comfortable with it.
Thank you.
The November 21st, 2024 Des Moines City Council meeting is now back in session. And the next item that we have on the agenda tonight is committee chair reports. And there were a couple listings in that item that we forgot that we did not have those meetings in November. So we just have a couple of reports here tonight. First, I'll begin with Chair Mahoney and the Transportation Committee meeting. Thank you.
Thank you, Mayor. We met tonight at 4 o'clock. It's a very interesting meeting. Primarily, we talked about, it's listed here as the 223rd Green Street Study Report. And it was the consultants KPG that did it. We requested, or at least I did, and they agreed that from now forward, they'll call it the Waterland Way Project, as we've honorarily named that street. But it was, I highly recommend you go to the website and look at it. It's a great vision for the connection between the Marina and downtown. Green spaces, walkability, effective transportation, safe, and actually very artistic. The residents participated in the survey. The one they chose of the three was the Waterland City Screens. The big question is, it's like everything, costs quite a bit of money. And there's, it's obviously in the early stages in design and so forth. But we discussed ways it could be funded. There are some grants out there. Advantages of this project is it is green in nature, so there's opportunities from other agencies and sources to get the funding. We look at completion of this in the early 2030s realistically. Once you see the pictures, though, you'd want it done yesterday. And with that, that's my report.
Thank you, Chair. Next up, the Environment Committee Chair Harris has our report.
Thank you. The main item of business was our source control update. And the city has a program in cooperation with local businesses to monitor periodically their, you know, basically what they're putting into the storm drain system. We do not have a, you know, people sometimes don't understand. They think that whatever goes into the storm drain is somehow magically treated by elves or something. That is not the case. And so we go around to businesses and other entities just to make sure that they are aware of best practice, that whatever goes into the storm drains goes into all of our creeks and into Puget Sound. And that is a very good program. We learned that we now have the capacity to do this kind of work ourselves and will no longer require an outside consultant. And that is always very good to hear. And parenthetically, the Highline Forum is not my thing. But I just wanted to mention the port. I attended the Highline Forum yesterday. It's Councilmember Mahoney's thing. But the port helped arrange an FAA webinar on Puget Sound airspace, which is of great interest to everybody concerning the SAMP. And I encourage everyone strongly to watch it. The biggest misunderstanding people have regarding the airport is who has control over what. And this 15 minutes will provide answers. You may not like the answers, but those are the answers. And go to the port's website, and it is there. Thank you.
So the FAA webinar is on the port website?
Yes. Oh, and it's on the FAA website. It's also on the Sea-Tac Noise That Info website. But regardless, if you just type FAA Puget Sound, it'll take you right there in your Google. Thank you.
Thank you. So next up, we have the City Manager's report. I'll turn that over to Catherine Cafrey.
Well, Councilmember Harris's comments are a perfect segue. I just want to yet again announce that the city will be hosting a meeting for residents regarding the SAMP on December 3rd. It is 6 to 7 p.m. It is a city-hosted meeting. The port is not involved in it, so it's really just city-related to the SAMP. I know it's been a lot of concerns from residents. 6 to 7, it's here in these chambers in City Hall. But it's also going to be on Zoom and recorded, so you can watch it in your PJs. You can watch it in your PJs the next day, or you can come here in person in PJs or regular clothes. And I want to make clear kind of what the point of the meeting is. It is really to help guide residents in how they can make comments to the FAA during this comment period that are meaningful and germane to the FAA regarding the SAMP. So we will not be going into like every project that's in the SAMP or anything like that. It's really more about what is the process? What is the goal? And how a resident can really get involved. We'll also have templates, like a template letter people can use, as well as sort of template comments. So, you know, for an exciting evening in December, come here.
Thank you. I do have a question for you. Have you been meeting with the public here and there?
I have. I have. I have, and the mayor has joined me at both. We've had two kind of coffee chats with the city manager. One was last Saturday, one was this morning. The last one is Monday at North Hill Espresso from 9 to 10:30. Please feel free to come by and chat and meet me and tell me what's on your mind. And then I have also actually already had a handful of like coffees with residents and some emails and things. I see some faces I know already in the audience. So I plan to be doing a lot of that as well, not just sort of these initial ones. That'll sort of be a regular thing.
Thank you. It's great. It's great to hear from her. All right. Next up on the agenda, we have our consent agenda. Could the city clerk please read the agenda for us?
Item one, approval of vouchers. Item two, approval of minutes. Item three, Small Business Saturday Proclamation. Item four, SB 5290, Local Project Review Requirements. Item five, Storm Fest Inter-local Agreement. Item six, Bird Deterrent Ball Purchase. Item seven, Marine View Drive Retention, or I'm sorry, Pond retrofit. Item nine, Marina Vehicle Charging Station Agreement. And that concludes the consent agenda, Mayor.
Thank you. Do I have a motion? Councilmember Nutting?
I move to approve the consent agenda as read, Mayor.
A second?
Okay.
A second by Councilmember Mahoney. Is there any item that a council member wishes to pull? Councilmember Harris?
Item six, the bird ball.
Anyone else? All right. So we'll now be considering items 1, 2, 3, 4, 5, 7, and I believe 9, because I think, I think we're still calling it 9, and 8 was removed. All right. All in favor? Raise your right hand. 7-0, thank you very much. So I have a proclamation to read. This is in regard to Small Business Saturday. Whereas according to the United States Small Business Administration, there are currently 32.5 million small businesses in the United States. And whereas, small businesses employ 46.8% of the employees in the private sector in the United States. And whereas, 79% of consumers in the United States value the contributions small businesses make in their community. And whereas, 96% of consumers who plan to shop on Small Business Saturday said that the day inspires them to go to small independently-owned retailers or restaurants that they have not been to before and would not have otherwise tried. Whereas, 92% of companies planning promotions on Small Business Saturdays say that the day helps their business stand out during the busy holiday shopping season. And whereas, 59% of small business owners say Small Business Saturday contributes significantly to their holiday sales each year. And whereas, Des Moines supports our local businesses that create jobs, boost our local economy, and preserve our neighborhoods. And now therefore, the Des Moines City Council hereby proclaims the Saturday after Thanksgiving as Small Business Saturday. And we urge the residents of our community and communities across the country to support small businesses and merchants on Small Business Saturday and throughout the year. Signed, this 21st day of November, 2024. All righty. There you go. I love Small Business Saturday. So I hope you guys participate. Okay. So we have item number six from the consent agenda that was polled by Councilmember Harris. So I'll defer to you. Go ahead and open with your comments.
So, thank you. This is the retention pond next to the business park. It's had a series of stratagem, I guess, over the years to try to avoid bird strike. I think that's the idea. And I guess it's a question. This strikes me as an unfunded mandate to a certain extent. Please, can you explain why I'm wrong? And is there any opportunity? And is there any opportunity to get the FAA to, you know, pay to avoid impacts to our commercial aircraft?
Absolutely. I don't know if I can answer your question directly. So this comes from FAA requirements that they put on the Port of Seattle to enforce. We got a notice from the Port of Seattle to bring our pond into compliance with standing water. I can't speak to the funding or if there are any resources there from the port to help implement.
Right, I'm just asking if basically if there are any opportunities either with the port or with the FAA, because it is an unfunded. I mean, you're asking us to come into compliance in order to help commercial air traffic be safe. And as much as I enjoy obtaining land, I'm just, I'd like somebody else to pay for that sort of maintenance if there's a chance. That's really...
Not that I'm aware of.
Okay. That's all I got. Thank you.
Right, any other questions? All right, I'm going to start just moving this way. Deputy Mayor Steinmetz and Councilmember Nutting, and then Councilmember Mahoney. Go ahead, Deputy Mayor.
Yeah, I'm really, is this, is this a ball that's floating on top of the pond? Is it strung on a wire across the top like you see like near airports to prevent airports from flying into high tension wires? Can you give me some sense of what this is?
Yeah, I wish I had a photo to share. They're actually installed currently on the south Business Park Pond at the intersection there of 216th and 20th. So if you get a chance during the daylight hours, you can peek over the fence and see them. So this is in the one further back, the larger one. They're basically floating black plastic discs, about eight inches, that sit on the surface of the water.
They float on the water, they're not attached in anyway?
Nope, nope. And they're weighed down, so they won't fly away in storms.
And I guess it just seems incredible to me that it's $124,000.
We are buying $83,000-ish of these.
$83,000 is what it takes?
Just to cover 32,000 square feet of surface area. It is a large, open, open water that we need to cover.
And it's our responsibility, that pond is our responsibility to keep the birds off?
Correct, yep. This pond was built with the business park because we have a public road through, running through there, and these detention ponds are serving that public road. These ponds are owned and maintained by the City of Des Moines. Therefore, it's our responsibility to bring them into compliance.
Thank you.
Councilmember Nutting?
Several questions. So this isn't part of surface water management, so it couldn't be part of their budget?
It is. This is coming out of the Surface Water Utility Maintenance Fund.
Okay.
Yep.
I thought there were wires and flashers strung above all of those ponds that are up there that are also deterrents for birds. Is that, is that not working, which was the SOP at the time?
So there's a history here with our prior manager, and I do not know the ins and outs of the communications that were had, but there was a miss somewhere at one point where wires were installed. They thought it met the requirements. Biologists came out from the port and said, you know, the wires are good for temporary as you're letting plants grow and provide coverage, but they're not a permanent solution for these open water cells. So they said the wires won't do. There's other options we looked at as far as netting over the ponds. You could also do more wires to actually get the diameter down. Both those other options were more cost and more maintenance challenges for our crew to actually get in there and maintain the ponds. Think of netting in a windstorm.
Right.
Yeah.
Agreed. And I guess my last comment is, is that I don't remember seeing a substantial amount of water in those ponds that would create some sort of flock-type situation to buy this many discs. So it's just, I'm just a little confused about that.
Yeah, no, that's a good question. The pond in question is a very large pond. This 32,000 square feet of open water is, I'd say, one quadrant of it, one-fourth of it. And it does have vegetation around it, so it can be hard to see the open water. But if you go to an aerial image, just any, you know, Des Moines aerial, go to the area, you can see how much open water just from the aerial is there.
So the one to the south and then the one directly to the north is just overflow for that single pond that is, is full most of the time?
Yeah, so the way these open water, it's a component of the pond. It's the first cell the water comes in. It's called the sedimentation pond. It always has water in it. It's meant to dump the sediment over time before it goes to the treatment cell, which is the vegetated, there's never standing water in it. 75% of the pond is dry majority of the year. So it's really looking at just this quarter of the pond that we need to put the bird balls in. And again, it's a large pond, so even though it's one-fourth of it, it's still 32,000 square feet of coverage we have to provide.
Very good. Thank you for the explanation.
Yeah, and since you brought up the budget, I'll just add that this is a, it may be an unplanned expense, but we didn't have to adjust numbers. We could account for it in our existing maintenance, surface water maintenance budget. So we're not having to move monies around. We're using existing room in our budget.
So we're not coming back to council for a budget consideration?
No.
Or extension?
No.
Okay, thank you.
Councilmember Mahoney?
I think you guys did a good job of finding the lowest cost to meet the requirements. However, I agree with my colleagues. I think we should send the port a bill. And if they don't pay it, they don't pay it. But the fact is, is it's an operational cost on their part, more than it is meeting a requirement on ours, is the way I see it. Thank you.
I would defer to working with legal on that request.
Councilmember Grace Matsui?
Yes, thank you for the presentation. I just had a question about this freight charge. Is there no Bird X, Bird Deterrent, floaty discs anywhere closer than Illinois?
Yeah, and I actually want to say they're coming from Mexico. And they're just, yeah, we spent a lot of time negotiating that fee and looking at other suppliers, and it is what it is. They're not a, there's not a lot of people out there making these. It's limited.
Thank you. Three D printer at home. You just make one at a time.
So, gosh, I did have several questions. We talked a little while. Could you possibly talk about plastics and water? And is this going to damage the water quality because it would be covered with plastic? And then could you, go ahead with that one, and then I have one more question.
Yeah, and a good distinction is we're not putting these in natural habitat or wetlands. These are stormwater ponds. So I'll just, I'll start with that. The material is HDP. This is the same material that 90% of the stormwater pipes are putting into the city is the same material that we're sending stormwater through that goes to the sound. We put a few blurbs in the packet, but I'll briefly cover those as, I'll read verbatim so I don't, they're chemically inert. HDP is chemically inert, meaning it doesn't leach harmful substances into the water. It makes it safe for long-term water contact without contaminating the water supply or in aquatic environments. That's the high level.
Okay. And could you expand just a little bit on the difference between a pond and a stormwater pond? Is it just, this is really a very natural-looking but piece of infrastructure?
Yeah, so man-made is the number difference between, you know, a natural environment like a wetland versus a stormwater pond. These were built. These were planted, and they have a specific function to take the water running off the business park and the roadways, drop sediment out of it, and then treat the water before then discharging it back into the natural environment. So the trees, the plants planted in there have a function of treatment.
Okay, okay, good. Councilmember Nutting?
I just have to dovetail on your question about chemicals and stuff. So these will not leach PFAS into the water at all whatsoever?
No.
Okay. And then I'm willing to make the motion whenever you're ready, Mayor.
All right, okay. Yeah, go ahead. Councilmember Oxaker?
Thank you. Well, obviously them being black in sunny environments and stuff, that's going to increase the heat of the water, temperature of the water. Is there any potential problem there?
Not that I'm aware of in our research. What comes to my mind isn't heat, it's degrading of the material. But we looked at that, and these have a 20, 25-year life on them. And I'm imagining it's even much longer than that. As far as a heat effect, this is the first cell of a pond, so there's plenty of opportunity to, as that water leaves, it's also kind of a buffer, I think, to the sunlight as well. So I don't imagine having a problem with heat. And if we did, it would dissipate as it goes through the rest of the 75% of the pond and under the shaded vegetation.
One more question, just to clarify that a little. Could you describe whether these are solid plastic or they're actually like a hollow, could it actually be an insulation factor keeping the water cool since they're, are they about four feet? And they're hollow, like a blown-up little plastic balloon?
Sure, they're more robust than that. They're hard. You can knock on them, on the table, and they do have some water in them, so they're weighted. So I don't know if that answers.
But there's that airspace that they create, an airspace inside of them, in other words?
Correct, yeah, so there is a buffer, I guess you could call that, of air between the top surface, the bottom plastic, and then the water surface. Again, I didn't come across anything that talked about heat, so I'm not as prepared. But I didn't see any indication that that would be an issue.
Okay, if there are no further questions, go ahead and take the motion. Councilmember Nutting?
I move to approve the purchase of Bird X, Bird Deterrent Balls for the total estimate amount of $124,191.0. And to authorize the city manager or the city managers designate to sign the purchase order at the time they are created.
I have a second.
Second?
Second, Councilmember Mahoney. Any further discussion or comments? All in favor, raise your right hand. 7-0, great. So next up, we have a public hearing. And the purpose of this item is to review and consider our property tax levy, and I'm going to turn this over to Jeff Friend.
Good evening, Mayor, Deputy Mayor, Council, staff, members of the public. Jeff Friend?
Oh, excuse me, Jeff. I didn't open the public, oh, thank you.
Okay.
Keep going.
Yeah, Jeff Friend, Finance Director, here to present the 2025 Property Tax Levy. So new for 2025, the proposed property tax levy amount would be $5,790,457. The proposed levy includes the 1% allowable increase of $55,869. The overall assessed valuation within the City of Des Moines increased by about $364 million to six, to that big number right there. It's an increase of 5.9%, so that's what, 100,000, yeah, $6,578 million. The city had an additional $34 million in new construction, adding $30,107 to the overall property tax base. The proposed tax rate for 2025 is an estimated 88 cents, a decrease of 3% from the current levy for 2024, which is 90.75 cents per thousand of valuation. Couple points I do want to make is the 1% allowable increase, that means we don't have to take that every year. During the pandemic, there were actually a couple of years where we bypassed taking that 1%. So what that does is it creates a gap between what you're allowed to take and where you're at actually. And that's called your banked capacity, and you're allowed to take that. So for 2025, we have about, that gap was about $29,000. And so we are taking that banked capacity. And then in the ordinance, it says that the City of Des Moines is allowed to take unused property tax capacity if the library or South King Fire reduce their capacity. As we know, South King Fire passed a ballot measure where they are decreasing their rate by 50 cents. So some in the community thought, well, maybe that's a way the city can get some additional property tax revenue. However, the county already takes that into consideration, so there's really nothing there for the city to do. It's, we're pretty much on track where we're supposed to be. There's no property tax loophole that bypasses ballot measures. History of Des Moines Property Tax Levy, this is the last 10 years. You can see at the end on the right is 2025 at 88 cents, which is a decrease from the prior year that was a bit over 90 cents. And you can see is the assessed valuations have increased over the decade. The rate per thousand has dropped from $1.65 in 2016. As we've said, that's because we're limited to a 1% increase on property tax collections. So as the values go up and we stay about the same, then the rate drops for pretty much year after year. This is a sample property tax bill for a resident of Des Moines. This is kind of like the annual slide that we show every year to show where the city stands on the property tax bill. So if you live in the Zenith neighborhood, this might be your neighbor's, this is the one I chose. As you see, school district, local school district gets about 34.83% of your property tax bill. Washington State Schools is 21.45%. The fire district, at least for this year, 14.8%, followed by King County at 11.39%. And then City of Des Moines came in at 8.61%. And so on the pie chart to the right, the large blue sections are your schools, and then where that arrow points is the City of Des Moines. And these are the motions. One ordinance levies the amount, and the other ordinance authorizes the increase from the prior year.
All right, thank you. So now it's time for public comment with regard to this particular item. Please keep your, if, well, right now we have no one signed up, and I'm going to read my script because I'm going to offer you the opportunity. So please keep your comments, if you come to the podium tonight, please keep your comments respectful and understand that anyone speaking or acting in a disruptive manner will be removed from the meeting. Please state your name and city of residence, and you would have three minutes to speak. Now, we don't have anybody who has signed up to comment on this item. Is there anyone who wishes to make a comment but has not signed up? Second offer, is there anyone who has not signed up to speak but wishes to speak? And third time, is there anyone who has not signed up to speak tonight but wishes to speak? All right. So council, now it's time for council questions. Council, do you have any questions, please? Questions only. Councilmember Harris?
Thank you. I was struck by your comment that your example referred to the Zenith neighborhood. Could you, how much divergence would there be in that pie chart, you know, for any of the other eight neighborhoods? Would it be?
Not much. Usually, in that chart, the city came in like 8.6%. Usually is it 7.6%? So the thing with property tax is there are a variety of taxing districts, and so it really depends on where your property sits amongst those taxing districts. You know, if you're outside of, I don't know, the library or something, then your property tax bill would be different.
Okay, but I mean, would it speak more to the overall, you know, wealth of the neighborhood that, or just what type of buildings around you, or I mean?
Percentage-wise?
Yeah.
I think regardless of how much your property tax bill is, those percentages would hold consistently.
Okay, that's all I got. Thanks.
Any other questions? All right, I will now close the public hearing. Is there a motion? Councilmember Nutting?
I move to enact draft ordinance number 24-091 determining the amount of funds to be raised by Advilium taxes for the year 2025 for the general city expenditures.
Do I have a second? Second, Councilmember Mahoney, any discussion? Deputy Mayor Steinmetz.
Yeah, I just, I mean, I'm going to support this. I think this is the right thing to do because we need revenue. As costs go up, we need to increase the revenue. Unfortunately, what you can see from the chart of the history of the property tax levy that Jeff had up there before is your property tax rate is actually going down as the value of the properties overall in Des Moines goes up. And that is just screwball tax policy. That is one of the most insane things about this state that you can imagine. I hope that the legislature will get rid of that 1% cap and at least match it to a CPI or something like that if we decide to put a cap on it. But I'm very much in support of this and I hope that we can, from a policy perspective, address this so that we get more stable funding sources in town. Because, I mean, despite the fact that the levy lid lift that was on the ballot would have returned most people to what they were paying in 2017, at rate, they didn't want to do that. And as a consequence, we're going to have to take some tough budget cuts. So I support this.
Right, thank you. Any other comments for discussion items? Thank you, Councilmember Harris.
Just somewhat, I don't know, rhetorically, just a technical thing. I really do not enjoy these graphs with the property tax levy thing. I think the way that property taxes are calculated confuses the crap out of residents. And this, you know, and talking in terms of, you know, 88 cents or 90 cents or whatever is not a particularly useful thing for residents. I'm not sure how to get there, but future discussions, in my opinion, should talk about basically dollar values more than these cents things. They just, it, it's such a confusing process that it's subject to manipulation in, in any discussion. And that's all I got, thank you.
Any other discussion? All right, all in favor of the first motion, raise your right hand. Thank you, seven, zero. Second motion, Councilmember Nutting.
I move to enact draft ordinance number 24-090 authorizing the increase in Advilium taxes for the year 2025 for general city expenditures.
Do I have a second? I think I'll give this one to Deputy Mayor Steinmetz, just to spread it all out even. Any discussion on this one? All right, all in favor, raise your right hand, seven, zero, great. Okay, item number two in the opening for a public hearing, the 2024 annual budget amendments. And again, this is going to be Finance Director Jeff Friend. The purpose of this item is for the council to consider amendments to the 2024 budget. I will now open the public hearing. Go ahead, Jeff.
Okay. So the budget adjustments overview, according to the Washington State Auditor's Office, budget compliance is determined at the end of the fiscal period. Therefore, amendments may be done at any time during the fiscal period, but cannot be done after the fiscal period. So we, as we say every year, we need to finish under budget. Some things are, as mentioned, can be unforeseen or unplanned. And we have the ability to adjust our budget for those items. So we'll talk about the general fund first and then we'll take a look at the other funds afterwards. I did not put a lot of numbers in the slides, the numbers are in the packet. But if you have questions, feel free to ask about those numbers. Revenue increases for the general fund, limited this to transfers in from the ARPA fund for the score jail costs, police overtime and the crime analyst, crisis response specialist. The repurposing of these funds was approved by council on September 5th. So this is just capturing the revenue side of that as we are transferring those ARPA funds into the general fund. The second point I'd like to make also is, you know, on occasions, there's a lot more revenue categories that are increased with budget amendments. But there was no justification that I felt comfortable with, like for sales tax or property tax, where we would raise those amounts because I, the expectation is those will be under budget. If we were to increase the budget on that, that wouldn't be a very accurate representation of budgeted expectations. Expenditure increases in the general fund, professional services, there was the consort communication study for the city council, the police support guild retro payment. So with the police support guild, when they formed their bargaining unit in 2022, their wages stayed at 2022 levels up until 2024, when that contract was ratified. Then they were what we'd call made whole for that time period. So that's why there would be a retro payment of about $130,000. City manager's office, we did the city manager search, there was a firm for that. And then there's the economic development director salary and benefits that were about $200,000. At the time of creating the 2024 budget, we, I mean, I, city manager might have had an idea. But as far as the budget's concerned, that was an unanticipated departure. And so the costs related to that for the city manager's office would be captured in these budget amendments. There is a transfer out to the Redondo Zone from the general fund. The reason being, and we did this last year and we have to do it again this year, hopefully this would be the last time, is that the Redondo Zone currently has negative $38,000 of cash. There, the parking revenue is a little light when they're doing construction down there. And then it's the same situation, it hasn't sustained itself. And so we'd have to transfer $100,000 into the Redondo Zone to just replenish the cash. But hopefully with the new parking, that's not voluntary, next year, that revenue will sustain the Redondo Zone and we won't have to transfer any more cash into that fund. And then the court remodel is the room right outside here that helps the city comply with the state's Supreme Court desire for the private defendant discussions. So the net increase is $965,000 for those items and others that I haven't put on the slide, but that are in the packet. Other funds, so this is summary of what's, the highlights of the other funds the city has. So one new fund is the Redondo Speed Enforcement Fund. That didn't exist at the beginning of the year, it exists now. So it's, it is capturing transactions, it needs a budget. So that budget, these amendments would establish the budget for that fund. There's an elimination of a transfer. So when we received the, the bond proceeds, we anticipated that the debt service funds would have to transfer about $9 million to the municipal capital fund. Later, we realized we can actually just book it directly to that fund, this transfer is not needed, there's no transaction there. But for budget purposes, we benefit by removing it. Alignment of budget with capital improvements plan. So the CIP was, has already been approved for 2025 to 2030. What you don't want to have happen is to approve that plan, incur a lot of costs and don't capture that in the budget and then you're over budget in those funds. So we have alignment of those amounts in the CIP with these budget amendments so that there's no surprises that are coming through from projects in the CIP. Senior Center roof replacement, so there's a grant that the city has gotten for solar for the senior center, which required a roof replacement. Further investigation revealed that that roof has three layers of shingles. You're only supposed to have two, so there's roof problems regardless. There's $80,000 is being spent to replace that, that roof because it's going to need to be replaced regardless. PB, PW automation fees. There's a fund that captures automation fees when there are permits issued. That is planning, building, public works, automation fees. And the purpose of these fees and the fund is to support IT, computer related costs of planning, building and public works. There were some fees transferred to the development fund for that purpose that were not budgeted. Because we realized the development fund actually pays the general fund for computer maintenance. And it made sense, instead of having the money sit in the PB PW automation fee fund, that it should be refunding or reimbursing the development fund for those costs because that's the purpose of those funds. Good news, and it's nice when in finance to actually have good news, REIT revenue exceeds budgeted expectations. So a lot of cities have seen their REIT decrease this year compared to last year. But this city has actually seen it increase. And so we're able to add about 100,000 to each of the REIT one, REIT two funds. So that's good news that we're having a stronger real estate year than we did last year. Makes us unique. And then there is one adjustment that's a rather large number, but this is actually just an accounting thing. It is an ARPA revenue adjustment. I can get into it, but basically we received ARPA funds in '21 and 2022. And we also changed our reporting basis at about the same, a little bit after that. So we received some ARPA funds when we were on accrual basis. And basically what were we required to do is take some of that revenue and park it on the balance sheet. Then we switched to cash basis accounting, but we, which doesn't require that at all. Cash basis accounting is like cash comes in, comes, cash goes out, that's your revenue expenditures. So we have this amount on the balance sheet and we just need to clear it out. And it's not going to affect financial reporting, it's not going to affect our annual financial statements. It's just clearing it, getting, cleaning up our books essentially. But it is four and a half million dollars. So you have to kind of mention that in the presentation. Suggested motion is here.
Thank you. So it's now time for the public comment portion of the meeting. And again, we have no one signed up on the sheet. But I am going to speak about the, the activity up here if you opt for my offering here in a moment. So if you do come to the podium tonight, please keep your comments respectful and understand that anyone speaking or acting in a disruptive manner will be asked to leave the meeting. Please state your name and your city of residence. If you do come to the podium and you would have three minutes to speak. And we don't have anybody signed up, but is there anybody who came to the meeting intending or wishing to speak who has not signed up? Second offering, is there anyone who has not signed up but wishes to speak? Third time, is there anyone who has not signed up but wishes to speak tonight on this? All right. So council, do you have any questions, please, questions only? Councilmember Nutting.
So the automation fees are going to be transferred to the development fund for computer maintenance for, from planning, building, public works. Are those, are those fees that are passed on to, um, permission permit fees that are, um, for, 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 I mean, kind of, part of your, you know, my, 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 my.
Yeah, so when someone pays for a permit, that's one of the fees they pay. So it goes along with other fees. Yeah.
And then my last question is, is, um, when are we going to get enough data from SCORE? Because I have several, several questions from SCORE. We pay an exorbitant amount of fees to SCORE that they are actually not providing that service for. And I'd love to put them on the hot seat. So when are we going to get enough data from SCORE when they can sit there and you're, and you stand there and that, and that podium right there, it takes some questions, but they actually need the answer for the fees that we're paying.
I can take that, Jeff, if you'd like. Let me visit with you to find out exactly what you're looking for. I was at a SCORE meeting last week and sent out a summary to the council about some new positions they're creating regarding safety. But let me chat with you about specifically what you're looking for and we can find a time for the executive director to come.
That's my, that's the end of my questions, thank you.
Any other questions? Councilmember Harris.
It may or may not be, Jermaine, but how's the, how are the cameras doing revenue wise? Is that?
The Redondo cameras? That's a good question.
I didn't mean to blindside you, I, I.
No, that's fine. I would say, well, they're in the budget for '25 at a million dollars a year revenue wise. So I think for this year, they might finish at about 500, 600,000 because we started in June. I mean, that's just off the top of my head.
No, no, that's really, I, I'm, I love first approximations. The other thing is, and I ask this all the time, so if the real estate, you know, is good here, any inkling as to why, if it's not in other cities?
Well, we're by the water. We have, you know, if you compare us to, I don't know, such a town in central Washington, then maybe, you know, the REIT is hitting them harder because their, their properties aren't.
No, I just, you're a thoughtful person and I just know you talk with other FDs. And I just wondered if there was some just consensus as to.
No.
Rate about our, the real estate market here at the present time.
Well, the federal way, what happened with, the federal way finance director sent out, on occasion, he does this on whatever topic. But he had sent earlier this year just an email blast to all the finance directors in the area, probably even, even outside our region a little bit, just asking how their REIT was doing. And I think I, we were the only ones who are like, actually, this is getting better. So, you know, it is a, a good question, I don't have the answer for that.
Yeah, because I mean, you look at like around First Avenue and Federal Way and they've got nice views and so on. And I'm just curious, okay, that's it, thanks.
Any other questions? All right, I will now close the public hearing. Do I have a motion? Councilmember Nutting.
I move to enact draft ordinance number 24-096 relating to the municipal finance amending the 2024 annual budget adopting, adopted in ordinance number 1779.
Do I have a second?
This is 2023 annual budget, or is it 2024?
It should be 2024.
Okay, second by Deputy Mayor Steinmetz, discussion? No discussion, we'll take it to a vote. Oh, did you have a? Okay, we'll take it to a vote, all in favor, raise your right hand, seven, zero, thank you. All right. All right, next up, we have some unfinished business with, and the item here is with, in regard to Water District 54 finance, franchise agreement. The purpose of this item is to review amendments to Water District 54's franchise agreement. And we're going to receive a presentation from Matt Hutchins.
Thank you, Mayor. Good evening, council. Matthew Hutchins, Assistant City Attorney, with presentation on draft ordinance 24-099. So you all may remember a few weeks ago, staff brought forward a proposal to institute a 6% utility tax on water utilities that do not have a franchise agreement that forbids imposing a tax on them. Currently, that would only apply to Water District 54, since they are the only one who currently do not have such a provision. And at the end of that presentation, council directed staff to have conversations with Water District 54 to see if they were willing to amend their franchise agreement to bring. to see if they were willing to amend their franchise agreement, to bring it in line with the other utilities and impose a franchise fee in lieu of imposing a tax. So we have had those conversations with Water District fifty four. They've been very fruitful and we have agreed essentially to amend two provisions in the existing franchise agreement that would bring them in line with the other franchise agreements. And that is the draft ordinance in front of you. It would add a definition of revenue and also, and then the second, second section imposes the fee, sets the parameters for it and removes a, the current five thousand dollar annual franchise fee in that agreement. State law does not allow us to introduce this franchise agreement or amendments the same day as it is passed. So we are recommending it be passed to the next available reading, which would be December twelfth. There is a motion recommended on the screen. Are there any questions?
No questions before the motion? Do I have a, Councilmember Harris?
I'm just, it, does this achieve revenue parity with the original proposal?
The, we would be bringing, bringing in slightly less revenue through the franchise agreement with agreed franchise payment versus if we were to impose the tax we proposed at the last meeting. Difference about ten thousand, fifteen, fifteen thousand per year.
Okay, okay, but it's like, okay, I didn't misread that. It's, it's ten, twelve thousand dollars.
But if we didn't have the provision in the agreements with the other franchises and we imposed a tax on them, they would also be paying more through the tax than they would through the franchise agreement. So this is just equal treatment as the other utilities have.
No, 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 what I mean, what I mean is it, it read to me, and I'm sorry, just my eyes are, but it read to me like we're giving up a certain amount of revenue versus the original proposal.
Correct, because some of the, the rep, sources of, sources of revenue that are not directly sales of water related are excluded. Whereas the original tax included all of those activities.
Would it be, I mean, appropriate to ask what? Yeah, I mean, you know, ten grand is ten grand. So I'm just asking, is it, what is the, I mean, and, and, and the city finds that an equitable compromise? I'm ju, I'm just asking what it.
I can, if I could just add, that's the reason why we brought this back. So the original utility tax is on gross receipts. The total amount that the utility collects. They came here to the council meeting and objected to that because that doesn't align with what other franchise agreements have, which excludes some of these non-specific like hookup fees essentially. And so our direction from this council was to negotiate a franchise agreement that includes the, the same language as is in the other franchise agreements, which excludes some fees. And so that's what we did. So yes, we will be receiving less money than if we had imposed a utility tax. But it will be, the language will be the same as what we have with other franchise agreements. And we're, we're thinking that number is about thirteen thousand dollars a year less based on this agreement.
That's an excellent answer. Thank you.
Right, any other discussion or questions before we take the motion? Councilmember Grace Matsui.
Thank you very much for your presentation and I'm glad that we gave the opportunity for the two staffs and entities to meet to hash something out rather than coming forward with a proposal that was not aligned with the other franchise agreements that we have with the four other utilities here. I will not be supporting this increase. I think it's important to note that utilities don't pay franchise agreements. These are passed straight down to your customers and your ratepayers. It's much like a tariff. If you put a tax on something, it will just get put right back on to the bill and pass through on to the customer. Water District fifty four actually has up to twenty eight percent of people in our district are low income. And I believe this is a burdensome and regressive tax. If I had been a member of this council while voting on the other franchise agreements back in two thousand sixteen, I would not have supported those either. Thank you.
Councilmember Mahoney.
I, I will be supporting this. I think the other, other water districts and utilities have been paying this fee minus Lake Haven, which had a previous agreement. I think it's fair for all. It, 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 it's a, it's a, it's equal in district, equal in debt distribution of impact. The only other one I have is that I think there's a legal issue here about recusal. And my colleague, Councilmember Grace Matsui, is a former board member of the Water District. And in addition, her sister currently is a board member on, I believe, the chairman. And I'm not sure if that's a legal issue. That could be kind of a conflict of interest or so forth. So I asked the city attorney on that.
Well, there's no actual conflict. She's not on the, the board anymore. I'd have to look through our, I think I need some more information about the other piece. I don't think I can answer that right now.
Can I ask a question? One time I had a apparent conflict of interest. I had spoken with members of the public in the middle of a public hearing and it was just a, and same with Deputy Mayor Pennington, I think, at the time. And you asked us a question, do you think this interaction or this association is going to influence your vote? Is that an appropriate question to ask at this juncture?
Well, I think the question specifically relates to our code of ethics conflicts of interest. So that, that was an appearance of fairness issue.
Gotcha.
So I'd have to get more information on this question and take a look at our code.
A wee tiny.
Question, but this tonight is not moving it into, tonight will not be passing it or not. It's just passing it to a second reading and then by the time that it would be voted on, you would have an answer.
That's a great point, thanks.
A wee point of order, we're in the, we're in the question period.
I'm asking questions.
Well, yeah, but it, but, but, okay, I'm fine.
We're all asking questions. Okay, any other questions? No other questions? Do you feel satisfied with that? Tim, we're good to, and Councilmember Nutting?
I move to pass draft ordinance number two, four dash zero nine nine to a second reading on the next available regular city council agenda.
Do I have a second? Deputy Mayor Steinmetz, any discussion? Councilmember Harris.
I will be in support of this. Utility taxes suck, but basically you have to, you have to pay the bills. And this is the least onerous way I can think of to get us to where we need to go. But they are less than ideal, but this is the path for this year. Thank you.
Deputy Mayor Steinmetz.
Yeah, I just want to compliment staff. I think there was a pretty clear consensus, try to get the parity with the other water districts. And that, that appears to be exactly what you've done. I appreciate your efforts to do that and I think this is appropriate that we have parity across the water districts that are here in Des Moines. So utility taxes, the efficacy of them and them aside, you've done exactly what we asked you to do. Thank you very much, I appreciate it. I'll be supporting it.
Right, any other discussion? All right, we've got a, a motion, take it to a vote. All in favor, raise your right hand. Looks like Deputy Mayor Steinmetz, Councilmember Oxker, okay, Councilmember Oxker, Councilmember Nutting, Councilmember Mahoney, Councilmember Harris and myself, all opposed. Councilmember Grace Matsui, it looks like it's the sixth one. And motion passes. All right. Next up, we have new business and we have a presentation in regard to our square footage tax. The purpose of this item is to consider a square footage tax on warehouse businesses. And it looks like our Assistant City Attorney, Matt Hutchins, will be giving us that presentation.
Thank you again, Mayor. Evening, counsel. Matthew Hutchins, Assistant City Attorney with staff presentation on draft ordinance twenty four dash zero eight two. My apologies, I'm not going to be quite as brief in this one. So as you've heard several times this year, the city has a structural budget issue. And one major factor of it is tax revenue. Like it or not, tax revenue is the life's blood of cities that allows cities to provide services to the communities such as police, our court, parks, senior services, code enforcement, and the cost of administering those services. These revenues in Des Moines come from a variety of sources. We have our big three, the property tax, sales tax and our utility taxes. And to a somewhat lesser extent, we have a business and occupation tax on other businesses. While sales utility and B and O taxes theoretically can track inflation to some degree, as Jeff covered earlier, the total amount the city can collect in property taxes can only increase one percent over the prior year plus tax on new construction. What this means practically is while the property value on the median property in the city has increased by fifty nine percent since two thousand eighteen, the city tax bill on that same property only increased a little under nine percent, works out to about thirty seven dollars. And the CPI for Seattle area has increased about thirty percent in that time. So this, this disparity was always going to be a problem at some point. But the high inflation that came with COVID accelerated a lot and now it's, now it's this crisis. And going forward, each year where inflation exceeds one percent, the problem's going to grow a little bigger. So faced with this gap between how much our revenue increases versus inflation, we look to see if there's any areas where our taxes are not properly capturing the kinds of activities that the taxes are designed for. Other cities, Kent, Auburn, have, they have found that traditional B and O taxes on gross receipts grossly undervalue the business activities that go on in warehouse operations. And with the development of the business park, we decided it was a good idea if we would find out if that's true in Des Moines as well. What we found is that indeed, very relatively little B and O taxes being generated by the business park. This is despite several large, well-known companies operating massive operations over an area of over one point five million square feet of warehouse space. Our research indicated that in the years twenty twenty two through twenty twenty four, we had five businesses that paid zero to a little under three hundred dollars per year, three that paid about three thousand dollars per year, one that paid varying between six and ten thousand dollars a year, two tenants that paid between ten and twenty thousand dollars per year. Now, it's likely that some or all of the taxes that were actually paid can be attributed to sales, retail sales that took place on the, at the warehouse and not on warehousing activity. And I'd like to point out that as Councilmember Harris has noted several times in the past, operations that don't conduct any sales of goods or services on the premises do not generate sales tax for the city either. So to, to try to ensure that warehouse activities contribute to the city services that are, that support these businesses and that they benefit from, draft ordinance number twenty four dash oh eight two proposes a tax on warehouse businesses similar to, similar to those in other cities that are assessed on the basis of square footage used in warehouse operations. This would be in an alternative to the gross receipts tax, not an additional tax on top. Businesses that already pay B and O tax that are more than what would be assessed under the square footage tax, they would not have any additional burden. And those, I'm sorry, those who, their square footage tax comes out higher, that's the amount they will end up paying. As recommended by the finance committee when we brought this to them, the proposed tax rate is thirteen cents per quarter, per square foot, with an annual CPI adjustment. Businesses with less than four thousand square feet of warehouse area would not be liable for the square foot tax. We estimate that the additional tax revenue generated from the business park could start at seven to eight hundred thousand dollars a year. And if Des Moines Creek Business Park develops as proposed, it could mean another two hundred thousand dollars per year. So given the council's previously stated preference that ordinances with major impact would, should have two readings, we are recommending that this be passed with second reading on December twelfth and suggested motion is on the screen. Are there any questions?
Councilmember Harris.
Yeah, thank you. Did you look at Burian out of curiosity? In your research?
I don't believe Burian currently has.
Okay, you're saying they don't have, have that?
Yes, I, I believe not.
Okay, so I was just struck by just how much added language and how very specific the ordinance is. You know, you mentioned, you know, really very specific industries. Is that, I, I take it that's very intentional? You know, I mean, is, is there, is it because there are like loopholes and stuff that people try to work around, you know?
Well, to be honest, I can't, I can't take a ton of credit for all the language in there. Most of it is borrowed from the cities who have already implemented their taxes and are survive legal challenges. But yes, there, there, there are always, if you write things very simply, there's always a lot of loopholes.
Okay, you can't just say, you know, you know, I'm, it's a square footage tax. I'm just, because you, you, for the public, you've got.
There's, there's also a matter of fairness and not being over, overbroad. So, you know, we could say measure from the outside of the outside walls. Everything inside is, but we, we would want to collect just space that's used for warehousing.
Okay, no, I was just really, it's just really a very specific list. Okay, and the other thing is, we talked about it in the finance committee, but is there anything precluding us from adding language to make a review of this somewhat automatic, like every couple of years or something? I'm just, we kind of, the rate that we chose struck me as slightly arbitrary. It wasn't based on any, you know, detailed analysis. And I mean, is there something you could put in this that says that the council will reexamine this every X years or something? Just to make sure.
Yes, if the council had some direction on how often they'd like to review it, that is, if that is the majority of the council as well, we could certainly find some language to put in there.
Yeah, I would, I would caution against that because if you don't review it for some reason, you might risk, you know, whether or not we can collect the tax if we have something in there. We do have the CPI, the automatic CPI, and really it could be something that could be either in the council rules or council could make a motion to put it on a futures agenda, you know, for two years. Put it in there so that the council's going to look at it at a study session or something. But if we include language in the ordinance, if you don't do it, you know, you're violating your law and, you know, there may be some consequences.
Thank you, that's it.
I think Councilmember Oxker, did you have your hand up? And then Councilmember Grace Matsui. And then Council.
Yes, I'm struck by the, the fact here that we have, we have a range of rates that are being charged here. And how much does proximity play into this question? We're, we're basically almost as close as you can possibly get to the airport. And that's where both, you know, that's what the warehouses are holding materials for. There are people that are further away, DuPont, North Bend and stuff, that are charging 15. How, how did we, I guess this goes somewhat to Councilmember Harris's question, is how did we arrive at 13 cents?
It was actually, I believe, Councilmember Mahoney who proposed that.
I can, I can answer this. In the discussion, we were, we were looking at the rates of various cities and so forth. And I believe there was more included than pretty much are here in the packet. And the average was about 13. We thought that, the consensus was that was a good start to this process. Something that would be evaluated later in that same committee in a year or two going forward. The biggest, the biggest factor we wanted, so we set ourselves at 13, but we, we wanted to make sure that the CPI was there to keep it adjusted until we did revisit. We felt maybe there was a necessary change. But it was because it kind of fit in the middle. We were exploring new territory, we were looking at Kent, we were looking at Tuck Willa, a few other cities that also had that proximity to the airport. And it was, it was kind of just what we thought was an average mark. That was, that was the, we won't say it's science, but we had the facts of those, those different cities and the rates they charged. And that's where we came up with the 13 cents. We thought that was fair and adequate for the first phase of this, being new and so forth.
Okay, given that we do have the need to produce revenue, I'm wondering whether, when this comes back, if the city manager can assess whether or not this is something that might be advantageous to raise this.
Beyond the 13 cents proposed?
Beyond the 13.
Okay, yeah, I can take a look at it with staff and talk about it.
Thank you.
Councilmember Grace Matsui.
Yeah, I wanted to make sure I completely understood some of the things you've said in the, in the document. So, it says here that even though businesses in the business park enjoy things like using the roads that we have here in the city, and if there was, let's say, an unauthorized road raised, and there was a big police activity in one of these parking lots, then Des Moines Police Department would be on the hook for responding. Is that true?
That is correct. If there was hypothetically some, a large bunch of street racers collecting in the parking lots. Yes, the, Des Moines Police would, would have to respond to that.
But some of the folks that have been tenants or owners of these business parks have been paying as little as $300 a year for the city services that we provide.
Well, some have been paying none.
Oh, some paying zero, okay, okay.
One paid a little less than 300.
Gotcha.
Four of them paid zero in BNO taxes.
Excellent, okay, thank you very much. I appreciate that distinction. So, they received services from the city, but they were not, some were not paying anything.
Correct. Presumably, they're not generating any sales tax either. They would be paying some utility taxes, but that would probably be the extent of their contribution to the sales base.
Gotcha. And around the adjustment and the automatic increase for CPI, we've seen some wild variance in CPI in the last five years. Some years as slow as 2%, and some years up to 4, 5, and one year it was 8.6. Is there a reason that we want to leave it that variable? Or would it be more advantageous for us to have a smoothing out effect? Like, it could be 3%, but on years that it's lower than 3%, the minimum should be 3% increase?
That, that is an approach we could take. I would say that's a policy decision for, for the council.
But in that way, it would have more predictability around how much we would be increasing that rate by each year?
I think that would be, that's fair.
Thank you.
So, I guess to take on to that, are you going to add that to, assuming that this goes to a second reading, is that going to be included as an option that we would vote on? Are you, it almost sounds like she's almost making a motion for an amendment. So.
I want to clarify that I was asking a question.
Yes.
Just to make sure that we know what the outcome would be if we chose to connect something to CPI, which we don't have any control over.
As we're looking at kind of the base rate that they've suggested, let us also take, or for my benefit, who has not looked at all this, let me look at what the other cities are using, if they have an automatic kind of trigger up or not, what metric they use. So, we'll take a look and then I'll make sure you guys see what's proposed before it goes before you.
I can also imagine that businesses would be appreciative, being able to count on what the rate increase could be annually, rather than being surprised each year that their expenses go up 4.6% from this charge some years and 3.2 or 0.
Right, predictability, got it.
Any more questions before the motion? Okay, do we have a motion? Councilmember Nutting.
I move to pass draft ordinance 24-082 to a second reading on the next available regular city council agenda.
Do I have a second? Deputy Mayor Steinmetz for the second. Onto discussion, what I might recommend is for discussion, rather than your points on why you want to support or not, if we might, if we do have recommendations for the staff to ask for more information that will help us make a final decision next time it comes forward, if we want to see any amendments or more information. So, any comments, ads, questions, recommendations for the next reading? Yes, Councilmember Mahoney.
Yeah, I have no issue with if we'd come up with a more constructive annual evaluation or increase. What, what has happened with a lot of our fees and licensing fee, and this is where I've pushed this in the Finance Committee and so forth in discussions with the interim city manager, now city attorney and so forth, was what's happened in a lot of our fees is they're like $10. And then 20 years later, it's still $10. And we haven't kept up with the time, so now we got to charge 25 and it's this thing. And what I'm really big in, in any way we decide it, is to ensure that we have a mechanism that helps us keep up with inflation, with the cost of living, the other adjustments that come. And so, it's, it's more automatic, so it's not these sudden shifts. It's more of a gradual commensurate, you know, increase, or maybe it's plains, maybe it drops. I don't know, but it's, it's one of those things where I don't see it dropping unfortunately. But it's more to keep pace with what's happened. I think a lot of times we kind of get caught behind the game and this is, the idea is just to get us there.
Councilmember Harris and then Deputy Mayor Steinmetz.
I just, anything, I think the Finance Committee is going to, now that we have that, is going to take care of a lot of that stuff, essentially just keeping this kind of stuff on the radar. And I would also hope that the city has, now will have a broad communication with other cities to make sure that we're all capturing the same kind of things, we're all at commensurate rates and so on. But you got to get started, and so, yeah.
Deputy Mayor Steinmetz.
Yeah, there, there are a couple of things about this that I really appreciate. Now, it is an, it is an alternative tax. So, those that are, it's essentially an alternative maximum tax on some of these warehousing businesses. So, I don't think people are going to get surprised, but it's going to level it out between the people who are operating those warehouses, how much tax they're going to pay. And that's a very good, a very good idea, just to keep it more level. So, I appreciate that particular aspect of this. I do, you know, I was not involved in the 13 cents per square foot, but if that's sort of an average, I think that's probably a very good place to start. While I appreciate the idea of predictability in the tax, hopefully people are paying attention to the CPI and that provides some level of predictability. But I do agree that there needs to be some automatic razor in there in order to make sure that we don't get caught when we haven't raised something in a long time in order to keep up with whatever the increased costs are. And so, you know, I like the idea of a CPI, but I don't think we're wedded to the CPI as our only way of increasing the tax. If some year we feel that CPI was only 1%, but we think we need to keep this at 3%, we can do that by ordinance, that's what councils do. So, I, I kind of think that hopefully we're not overthinking this too much and trying to get a nice, basic tax plan in place while we introduce this concept to the business owners here in Des Moines who are going to be affected by that. And again, I get back to the, the alternative tax was, was really brilliant because that's the way it's going to be fair to the businesses in Des Moines. So, I, I'll support moving this on. But I'd also appreciate it if some of those could be addressed, some of those issues that I raised the next time.
Okay, Councilmember Harris.
Yeah, I forgot, I forgot. The broader issue is that Burian, I mentioned Burian because, you know, Burian, Sea-Tac and us, we all have these warehouses in support of the airport and they are owned by the Port of Seattle. They are the landlords, so they are in charge of, if we are not capturing the cost of public safety or other ancillary types of things. You know, that's a discussion on another front as opposed to the tenants. And as a broader discussion, we should be thinking about, okay, how are all of our cities capturing those costs beyond just the warehouse tax? As the airport grows and we're all doing this warehousing, we should all be in communication so that we're, none of us are outliers again on any of these kinds of things. Thank you.
Just a moment. I take notes too, so when I get, anyway, thank you for that moment. Any other discussion items before we vote on the motion? I do have one thing, so do you feel like it's pretty clear there were a couple of asks here when we bring it back? Does staff feel like they've, they've got that? Any questions for the council on clarity of what we would like when we see this come back?
What I hear is you want me to take a look at what the actual base rate is that's going in at the 13 cents and that we need to kind of have a conversation about what is the right way to sort of calculate some type of automatic increase that is predictable, yet also simple and makes sense.
Looks like we have a nod. Okay, good. All in favor, raise your red hands. Looks like we have a 7-0. Good. All right. Now is the time in the meeting for, opportunity for council members to bring forward new agenda items for consideration. It's a time for the purpose of proposing new business items for discussion on a future agenda that also have not previously been before the council. This is not a time for council action or discussing old business. Council members can submit questions and seek updates at any time from the city manager about previously discussed items. Does any council member have an item they'd like to bring forward at this time? Councilmember Oxacre.
Yes, I would like to see us develop a set of guidelines as far as whenever we take on any major new projects or anything. There's something called total cost of operation so that in addition to knowing how much the project is going to cost, we would also know how much it's going to cost to maintain it and what expenses would be involved there. But also, I think it would be beneficial, and we're seeing this happen right now with the passenger ferry study going on, is four years after inception, we're suddenly, we're finally getting to the point of doing a return on investment. So, it would be helpful to have those types of estimates available when we're considering the projects in their initial stages. So, I would request that we put this on a future agenda to, to come up with some kind of a set guidelines that we would consider before we consider these projects.
So, my question is, would that be part of a strategic plan? Would that be a specific item that would be under discussion? And, or would this be something that would be referred to committee? I'm not exactly sure if it would be economic development if it were a committee, recommendations?
So, I, I think what I would say is let us come up with a few different approaches because I think your initial question is really purely about dollars and cents, which is very fair. But I think when a governing body looks at projects, ROI can also be calculated by community benefit, transportation benefit. There's other, I know you're getting at the financial part. So, let me talk with staff about some possible models for how that could be. And we could bring you a presentation if you would agree probably in the new year, just because we're very focused on the budget right now and there's only one more regular meeting. So, let me bring a presentation for like full council discussion, get that feedback, and then we can decide if that really ultimately will live in a strategic plan or if that just becomes sort of a way of doing business.
So, after hearing that, question for this.
That you need three council members to agree to it, to move it forward, to spend staff time on it, so.
But I'm trying to get enough information, so that, that was going to be my next question is for a head nod, but you need to ask, okay, so my next question is, do you have any questions about what she said? How do you feel? Anybody have any questions for Catherine or for Councilmember Oxacre? Jay, Councilmember Harris.
You know, I broadly support the notion. I'm just trying to give the city manager a couple of months to find her feet and, and because you're asking a very, really a very big strategic thing. My only input, there's this little thing called the Century Agenda by the Port of Seattle. You should read it because they, yeah, it's a broad strategic plan that has all kinds of different points. And, but I'm just, I don't think your request is actionable right now, but I know that what you want to accomplish is going to happen, you know, in the next couple of months, truly. So, I'm just, yeah.
So, with that, do you have any answer for that, Councilmember?
Yeah, I, it's, and, you know, I'm not asking for it to be immediate. I think it's just putting it on the radar that it's, it's a consideration that we should be making. And we're here, you know, we set policy and, and it's just, it's saying that, okay, these are some of the things we want considered before we are asked to make decisions on some of these, these policies. So, I am fully appreciative of the time constraints and, and all of that. I just, you know, I'm trying to get it on the radar.
So, I, I have an ask. What if, would it be all right with you to put it on your own calendar and give, give this process about four months? So, April, to come, to, to come back in April and even have some conversations with her before we put it on an agenda for a discussion at the dais and a big presentation with a bunch of footwork? If you, if you could, if we could put this ask off for about four months and give you a chance to observe how things are going and have a private conversation? And then if, if you feel like, no, I need to bring this forward, maybe bring it forward in the spring? Is that a good recommendation?
I, I don't see that, that I'm asking for something by date certain or anything, that it's, it's something that's out there. I think that, I don't sense a reluctance on the, the city manager's part for doing this. So, it just puts it on the record, says, okay, this is, we're going to, we're going to consider this.
Okay, I'm, I'm not really in favor of putting it on as an agenda item right now. So, that's going to be my stand on the head nod. But I will look down the line if, if there are three nods. Those three nods have their right to have that on the agenda. So, are there three nods? Councilmember Grace Matsui. Oh, that was a nod like for a yes? So, we have, so I just, how about if I have three hands? Do I have three hands? One, two, okay.
I'll, I'll bring it back in two months, okay? But not, it's just not, it's not well enough. But not, it's just not, it's not well enough defined, and I, I just, as a matter of principle, I'd like whatever we do in this new items for consideration to be things that are operational, and, and it, but something operational, if it isn't happening in two months, I'll be right there with you.
Okay. So, it kind of looks like it's open permission, open permission to bring it back later. Okay, thank you. Moving on to council member reports, and we'll begin with Councilmember Oxiger.
I just like, oh, excuse me. I just like to say that the, again, that there are rare opportunities that the public has to tell us specifically what they want to do, and that, again, on the November ballot, they, you know, once again, told us the direction they hope we will take. I appreciate their, their input, whether it's comfortable or not, but the result is, they've given us clear direction, and I think that that is, I thank them for their, for their voting on the matter.
Good. Right. Councilmember Harris?
Thank you, yeah. Tagging off what Councilmember Oxiger said, the, the public did speak, and I just, I, I have already said this to the new city manager, I want to give her a few months. She has been thrown into the deep end, and I think the worst thing in the hundreds of businesses that we worked for is, there's this tension where the new CEO, you know, is like change, right? And they get overwhelmed, they get lobbied, 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 and, but the one thing that the new CEO desperately needs is to see the field, and that takes time. So, the tension is, like, you want to give them enough time to get that visibility, okay? But not enough time to get so lobbied by all of this other junk, that it simply furthers the status quo, and short circuits the change that she was brought in to effect. So, I'm just trying to give her a chance to breathe, in addition to moving from Texas and all of that other stuff, but never mistake that for my, you know, feeling of anything like complacency. I attended, like, almost all of the SAMT town halls, and I appreciate people showing up. A little stat, about 234 people signed in, that is 100 less than the public that attended the 2018 scoping meetings. And just during the third runway, you'd have 500, 800 people at any individual meeting. So, the public engagement in the airport has just, it's in the tank. And I don't know what to do about it, except to, to just keep trying to tell people that the SAMT will have as dramatic an impact on the, this city as the third runway. But somehow, we've gotten inured to that, and to the extent that we thought that the business park was this unalloyed good, and didn't even need to do various analyses of what benefits it's providing. I agree with Councilmember Oxiger that we must look rigorously at the benefit proposition of anything we do moving forward. I attended, as I mentioned, the Highline Forum, and, which is, you know, sort of a port thing, post-third runway, meant to try to, you know, try to get the communities to work together. It never turned out as intended, but this last meeting, I'll just close with, they had a fascinating discussion. Both Burian and Sea-Tac have their economic development teams working on childcare, and grants to help promote childcare businesses, something that we really need desperately. You need to provide childcare to people if they're going to, you know, if we're going to have people move here and make this city a great place for families. You have to have a place to have, to put your kids, that you can trust, you know, if you're going to get on light rail and commute. And they have determined that that is a strategic interest of their cities, and the port is eager to help work with their cities to make it happen, it's something we should look at, too. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember. Councilmember Mahoney?
Thank you, Mayor. I just want to thank those that assisted and came and participated in the Veterans Day event. I saw Councilmember Oxiger, and Councilmember Grace Matsui, and the mayor there, and several of our staff, and I just appreciate it, it's a great thing that we can honor our veterans. I want to wish everybody a happy Thanksgiving, and I look forward to helping in any way I can, our new city manager, on you succeeding and bringing our city into the next step of its future.
Thank you. Councilmember Grace Matsui.
Thank you. Well, just today, I had the great opportunity to meet with the Senior Advisory Committee here at the city, and thanks to Jeff Crump, our chair, and Nicole Nordholm, we went over to the Highline Heritage Museum for a tour, including a behind-the-scenes tour, and looking at some of the way that they do conservation of the documents there. And I think it was really enlightening, at least for me, speaking myself, about the way that they are a resource for preserving the local history, and making sure that if we have residents of Des Moines, let's say, who've lived here for 41 years or so, that their stories are not lost, and that we have some sort of way to increase them, and increase the retention of them. So, we got some ideas for how we might do that in a response to going to Highline, even though we do have a very strong historical society here, that I know has collected stories from our residents as well. But we have the opportunity to sort of take that show on the road, we've been visiting other locations and going out into the community, and I think it's a really neat way to get a chance to visit those things, but also to get some ideas that we can bring back to enhance here in Des Moines. I also attended the, the local SAMT open house set up by the port, and I will say that I think that it could have been organized in a way where it was easier to digest the information. If you wanted to read each individual card, and have an intelligent conversation with the staff member who was there, it would have taken a couple of hours, I think. So, in the format that it was, and I don't know if others felt the same, I really felt like I could focus in on one of those posters and presenters, not 15 of them. But there's just so much information that is out there, that I'm very glad and thankful that we're putting on the opportunity for our residents to learn more about the SAMT and how it will impact them. I really think that if we are serious about our vision for having, and our mission for making Des Moines a high quality of life, a livable city, and a great place to raise your family, we need to take a look at the impact that the Port of Seattle airplane operations have here, and really stand up to say, you are impacting in a negative way our population, the residents, the citizens who are here, and what can we do about it to make this a more livable place? Thank you.
Thank you. Councilmember Nutting?
Thank you, Mayor, no remarks at this time, thanks.
Thank you. Deputy Mayor Steinmetz?
Oh, boy. As, as some of you might know, you know, as our new city manager came here from Austin, I went to Austin, where I got to celebrate my birthday weekend, and I had a blast doing it. And so, first thing I did when I came back was sat down and talked to our new city manager about Austin, and some of the great shows that I saw, and the music that I heard, and the great food that I had there, it was wonderful. Over the course of the last, it's been a couple of weeks now, you know, the, I have participated in the Sound Cities Association Deputy Mayor's phone call, where we all get together, and, boy, every city is really going through budget crunches right now, it's, it's just amazing. I participated again in the Sound Cities Association pick, or Public Interest Committee. The, I tried to be the liaison to the Destination Des Moines meeting last Tuesday, but after the power went out for about five minutes, I thought I was going to get back on, but my internet was out, and so I couldn't participate in that meeting. You know, I did attend a couple of the holiday markets that have been happening, and they were just wonderful. The, I watched the Coffee with the City Manager event last Saturday, which I think she did a wonderful job, and there were lots of good questions by people that don't often show up, and that's at a lot of the city events, and that's part of what really made it work well. You know, trying to find times when people that aren't coming to these meetings, or some of our other meetings, so that they can participate, I think that was just great. And, you know, I have met with my colleagues to discuss some of the budget issues, and some of the feedback that's going to go into creating the budget that we're going to end up with. And then last but not least, I just want to wish everybody a happy Thanksgiving. So, you know, we're not going to be in session next Thursday, because we'll be sitting around, holding our bellies, trying to stay awake, as the el triptaphin kicks in. But that'll be fun, and we'll be with people we love, and that's really what's very important about holidays. So, thank you very much, have a happy Thanksgiving, everyone.
Thank you. Well, I am, I just want to say, I'm very appreciative for these, these six other people that sit here. You, as you can tell by these reports, they're very involved in the community, they care about the impacts of all sorts of things on the residents who live here, and we're working really hard to advocate everywhere we can. I think we can't do everything, sometimes we miss stuff, but, and thank you for your patience, but I'm deeply grateful for the service of these people up here, very thankful for our new city manager, she's out there answering questions, listening to people, so thankful for that. Recently, I've been putting out a little bimonthly newsletter called The Mayor's Minute, that details a little bit, a little bit more detail about what I do out in the community, so I hope you can catch that. Big thanks to Matt Mahoney for this Veterans Day thing that he puts on, it's very thoughtful and honoring inside of our community, and I hope that that turns out to be a lasting I spend a lot of time meeting with colleagues, not only these colleagues, but colleagues around the region, just taking the temperature about budgets and partnerships, and I really appreciate the openness and availability, and, and of my colleagues here, again, to visit. I want to appreciate, I was at the SAMT meeting as well, the, the staff and residents in our community that attended that. It's just another night out of your life, but thank you for, for going, to some of you who aren't even here anymore, went to all of them. I mean, I think Councilmember Harris maybe went to all of them, some residents went to all of them. Thank you, thank you. Couple other things, I, I'm on the skip, it's called South King Housing and Homelessness Partners Executive Board, I don't often report out about that, but I want to say, they're almost ready to fund some more projects, they, we have a big pot of money that 12 cities pool to support affordable housing in South King County. Thus far, we have supported funded building, renovations and upgrades to 500 units in South King County. So, thank, thank everybody for doing that, it's a great partnership. Sound Cities Association, Deputy Mayor Steinmetz mentions that here and there, I'm on the executive board, they're finalizing your legislative agenda, and I just want to say, public safety across the entire county is number one. This organization represents cities in the whole county, and that's number one, and also advocating for local options for cities to get funding from the state and make our own decisions about how that, especially sales taxes, lots of lobbying to get our money back into our city to do the best we can with it. I think that's all I have, and I'll join with my colleagues to say happy Thanksgiving, I hope that you enjoy friends and family this next week. I'll be in Tokyo, celebrating my kids in a, in a traditional Japanese ceremony, so I'll have pictures of me with a full-on kimono, and the hair, and the makeup, and everything, super looking forward to that next week, so. Well, enjoy your weekend, and, oh, this concludes our business meeting for this weekend, the next meeting date will be December 5th, city as city council study session, if you're, please remember to pick up after yourself on your way out. Councilmember Oxiger, would you like to take the motion?
I move that we adjourn.
Second.
Got a second over there. All in favor, raise your right hand. Woo, 7-0.